I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Any additions to the agenda?
I think we're just...
Not anymore.
No, I think we're fine.
I had one, we got rid of it.
We'll put that on in two weeks of that.
Yep, that'll work. All right, public comment.
If he can wrestle out of his coat.
That's better than the last time I saw you, you weren't a sling, so you've improved.
Right, big improvement. Howard Marshall, Ashpoint Road. I'm here as the Energy and Technology Committee Chair tonight, just to say that we've sort of run out of stuff to look at at this point, so I just want the Select Board to consider if there are other issues for us to consider. We've got some stuff straightened out with the electric bills in Solon Farm and kind of decided to put further solar stuff on a back burner while everything's in chaos with what the funding of them is like. And that was kind of what our focus was on, so I'm just, you know, don't need an answer right now, I just, you know, if you, if the Select Board has issues they want us to look at, we're kind of out of things to do at this point.
Well, wait to see how we're doing up over the hill, recycling building.
Now, without the Energy and Technology Committee, but as a member of the Southern Maine Astronomers, we did a dark sky event down at Mitchell Field for the third year in a row now, and got a lot of good feedback from it. And I just want to, I would like, I've given you a little handout here, which is the two possibilities for designations for Harpswell as a dark sky location. I, this is just to kind of get the ball rolling, to see if the town is interested in doing something with this. And these are the two possibilities for Harpswell. One is a dark sky community, which involves the whole town. The other is an urban night sky place, which is, would be Mitchell Field, maybe someplace else, but just like a park or a spot that's set aside as a place to keep light away from for people to appreciate the sky, set up telescopes or whatever. So, again, this is, at this point, you know, I think I'll probably approach the land trust and the rec department, and, which is who we did the dark sky events with, and see if there's something to do. We got a lot of good feedback from people who came, which of course is a skewed selection. They're the people who came to see the dark sky, but a lot of people in town seem protective of the view of the sky that we have here in Harpswell.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I know to Northeast Carey where we go hunting at night, it's pretty amazing.
I did a little publicity thing for the last event, and I started by asking how many people have gone out at night and seen the Milky Way. And half the people raised their hands, and that is quite unusual. Eighty percent of the world has never seen the Milky Way. So, that's it. I will try to get some progress on more information about the dark sky options.
Maybe come to the board too, the next time you hold one of those events. I remember you coming to us earlier, and you did one of these earlier in the year as well, I believe. And maybe we could just make an announcement and get everybody to shut their lights off. Helpful, but, you know, ask for an hour or so, it'd get you more darkness.
Well, you know, the nice thing down at Mitchell Field is that there aren't any lights, really.
There's none that really interfere with you guys down there?
No, I mean, you can see glow from Portland and Brunswick, but if the glow that you see is significant, there's too much haze in the air anyway, because it's, that's, the haze is scattering the light from the town. If it's really good, clear air, and, you know, you have a really good view of the sky, that light from the towns doesn't interfere as much. I mean, that's, the urban night sky place designation is for someplace where you have a really good, clear view of the sky within like half an hour or something of a city. Because, you know, like Kevin said, you can go pretty far north, and there's a whole lot of parts of Maine where it's quite dark, and, you know, but it's not near anything.
Right.
Harpswell does have the advantage that we're not far from Brunswick and Portland, and still, you know, you've got a good, clear view of the sky.
I know I've told this story a couple times, but I was out putting up campaign signs one night, it's getting darker and darker, and I, on the way home, I pulled in here, there were two deputies out front, the power was off in town, I mean, it was off on both sides of town, and it was dark. The deputy's standing out there, and he's going, "Wow, there are a lot of stars."
It is quite impressive here, it really is. I got involved in this after we moved here, and got in touch with Southern Maine Astronomers, and have been active with them since then. But, yeah, that's, you know, I would like to pursue it. I think Mitchell Field could be a nice place for it, there might be other places in town that would work.
Thanks, Howie.
Howie, may I ask you a question? So, when you say pursue it, you're just looking for certain locations, like Mitchell Field?
Well, what I want to do is, first of all, see that there, that people are interested in doing it. And it's the sort of thing that it might best be done. If it was going to be like Mitchell Field, it would probably be best to have the astronomers, the rec department, and the land trust perhaps cooperate on doing the work that you need to get the application in and get the site approved and everything. Of course, before we go that far, we'll come back to the Select Board with the plan.
Okay. I just look at your two options here, and I don't dislike dark skies, after all the positivity you've heard, I've got to be the realist in the room, is number one, the international dark sky community, quality outdoor lighting ordinance. I have a floodlight that shines my way to get to my mother's house, and that's not coming down, is all I'm saying. Safety comes first, so I was just curious where you were going with this.
Flashlight, flashlight, Terry.
It doesn't shine enough into the woods to see the animals coming. I ran into a deer once, I mean, safety.
First of all, I will get you the outdoor lighting guidelines that they also have. I've got the website on this sheet also, it has a lot of resources. And they don't demand that you turn off all your outside lights. It's just sensible lighting, like our streetlights, we're, what's the word I'm looking for?
LED?
Well, the LED streetlights are in performance with the recommendations.
The color temperature.
The color temperature, and they're focused down, they don't go out. On things like a floodlight, if it's on when you're using it, or it's on a timer or a motion sensor, that's much better. It's things like that. The color temperature's important, because the blue light is blinding to people and animals, and it's, and it scatters. So that, like the streetlights that we have, are much more orange light, and they're very sky friendly. And that sort of thing. I mean, I think the dark sky community is a long shot, it's a lot of work, you know, and it's, it affects the whole town, as opposed to setting aside, you know, a spot down at Mitchell Field for observations. But at the same time, it's nice if we can cut down on the unnecessary light around town.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Howie. Anybody else for public speaking?
Hi there, Allison Hock, Cundies Harbor. I just wanted to come before the board tonight to speak of, I guess, a situation that has arisen from a piece of my property in town, and maybe work through that with you guys, and maybe come to a better solution. So, my husband and I own a seventeen acre parcel on the other side of town, the other side being 123 off that side, and earlier this year, the rental that my daughter and her boyfriend were living in was bought, and they had to move out. And they were looking for an affordable rent, which we all know is crazy right now, and they had come to us and asked if they could put a camper on our property. And of course, we were like, okay. Not that that was my first choice for my kid to be doing, but that's what they wanted to do to make it till next year, because unfortunately, they purchased a piece of property outside of town, they can't live here. Hannah manages our wharf, and Colby is a fisherman at our wharf. I received a letter, we received a letter from the town, kind of giving us some grief about having the camper over there. And when I came in to talk to Codes, it just was a lot of confusion and understanding about how the ordinances work, I feel like on both sides. Definitely frustrated. And the more that I have been thinking about this, it seems, I don't know if the word's hypocritical, but it's like we've, all we talk about is how we want the youth to stay here, and how we want fishing to stay here. And that is very near and dear to me, because I have both of them. You know, I have only two of my five older kids that are living in town right now, well, Hannah isn't a camper. So, the more that I thought about it, and the more that I'm looking at the ordinances, and I feel like are very confusing, the way that I read the ordinance was that it was permitted for the camper to be there, and I didn't see the issue. And the more that I continue to talk about it, and am frustrated about it, I mean, does Harpswell, you know, we're looking for all these things, we're making these town committees about affordable housing, but we have ordinances that are getting in the way of normal people just trying to live. And, you know, more digging into it and talking about it, you know, the town wants to, you know, only permit them four months of the year to live in a camper, and does the town really want to be telling people what they can and can't live in, if that's all people can live in? And we're worried about becoming a community of retired, rich people, and I feel like, you know, a little bit digging and looking at this is like we're targeting young, working, poor class that's trying to make it in this town, it's already as hard as it is to do it. And my suggestion that I'm coming up with, that I'm hoping you guys would be interested in, is I think it's time for an ordinance audit. You know, we keep adding ordinances, we don't ever get rid of ordinances that I've ever heard of, I'm sure Terry and Christie could speak to that. But we're doing a lot of things, I feel like, that are counteractive to where we want to be. And I think if we just looked in the ordinances, especially for that one, I mean, that's, it's a cluster, honestly, even for someone like me to try to understand that, but also targeting a class of people I don't feel like we should be targeting. I don't want everyone living in a camper, and I don't want everyone living in single wide trailers, but I just, it just, it feels very targeted. And apart, even part of, well, that's just another subject, I want to stick to just the camper part of it. But I'm requesting, and maybe you guys will think about, and I don't know where you would place it, you guys would be better to know where that would go, but to look at some ordinances to understand, are we actually trying to make Codes do things that we really stand behind? Do we stand behind trying to kick Colby and Hannah out of town, because that's all they can afford to do right now? And I really don't think that we do. I'm seeing, because I have a few young fishermen left, that they're not going to live in town. And our fishermen are not poor by any means, and they still can't live here. And that's very concerning to me. It's not just, you know, helpers coming from out of town, these are actually young men who own fishing boats that can't afford to live in Harpswell, and that's, it's ridiculous. But I would like for you guys to at least talk about that, and look at it, you know, obviously not right now, but at a later date. And then, aside from that, is the other part of, I guess another issue I had with that was, you know, that I had sheds on my property in Cundies Harbor, I moved the sheds to the property over there, no problem with them over there, and then I put them behind, because I'm trying to clean the property, I'm putting them behind, and then all of a sudden, I get a letter that says I need to permit those sheds, which I know they don't need to be permitted, they're not big enough. So I just, consistency in town, you know, I just, I did say that, you know, I've talked to Christie, I do feel a lot better, I've talked to a couple of you guys singly about moving forward, but I just don't want to feel targeted in my own town. I do want to follow the rules, I do want to be a good citizen here. So I just want to work together, and I want the town to work with me and work with my kids to be able to stay here, I guess, as long as they can, so, thank you.
Thanks, Allison. Anybody else? Select Board announcements?
I don't have anything.
No? Town Administrators report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, everyone. First, I want to report to the board and to the public that the town received fourteen responses to our RFQ, RFP that went out for construction manager at risk. So there were fourteen companies that are interested in working with the town on building that central emergency services building. The architects have gone through all of them, and have kind of whittled the list down, they're recommending that we interview three or four firms. I was going to recommend to the board tonight that the interview team consists of two staff members, being myself and the fire administrator, Mike Drake, the two fire chiefs that serve the town of Harpswell, Dave Mercer at Harpswell Neck, and Ben Wallace, who serves both Cundies Harbor area and OBI area, and then Port City Architecture would be part of that team. So I just wanted to see if there was consensus from the board to move forward. We're trying to set those interviews up for the week of December eighth.
Do you need a vote or a head nod?
I think a head nod would be fine, because I don't believe we need to be appointed.
You got it.
We're just an interview team that will report back with a recommendation, so...
I was going to be on it, but I'm out of town.
I don't have the expertise to volunteer myself to be on it, and there's people that are far better suited than myself, so...
Well, frankly, we're counting on the architect.
Yeah.
I mean, it's possible, if we get down to having a difficult choice, we may want to pull in the Select Board at that point. You know, say we pick two that are very equal.
Yeah, they're...
So, I mean, at this point, we won't necessarily bring you in, but...
We'll hold ourselves in reserve.
That could be a possibility, okay. I also wanted to report that I went to the grand opening of the new Tedford Shelter at, it's on, what is that, Thomas Point Road?
Yeah.
Near Cook's Corner, and the chairman was there today, and really is an incredible facility, set up to meet the needs of the area, and Harpswell contributed, the taxpayers of Harpswell contributed to that project. It's a new concept of housing people and providing services right there for people, so they can then move into permanent housing. So the facility is really well done, there's a family section with an outdoor playground, there's spaces for adults, and then there's a common area where they can gather and be provided with various resources, contacts with people who can help them move into more permanent housing situations. So I think that is money well spent, and supports a real community and area need for people. Let's see, I wanted to just let the Select Board know that the Town Lands Committee, working with the Recreation Director, is planning to submit a letter of intent for a Common Good Grant with Bowden College. So we think it's probably for a project at one of the town lands. It really does not involve any money from the town, just staff involvement for kind of oversight. It may be a cleanup of a town property, we'll report later when we have a final grant application, but I just wanted to let you know about that letter, because it has to be submitted next week, Wednesday, and you won't be meeting again.
Okay.
Also, another project, working with the Recreation Director, Katie Neal, we have set up a community meeting to talk about Clark Cove. It's going to be held at Harpswell Community School on Tuesday, December ninth, at six o'clock. So we talked about maybe trying to have it in this room, but we wanted to have more space, so we've moved to that site.
You think it'll be a big crowd?
You know, there's a lot of interest.
Six p.m., you said, Christie?
Six p.m.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
December ninth.
So put that on your calendar. Also, the budget process for 2026 has started, so the Deputy Town Administrator and Treasurer, myself, attend all the meetings, and also the Select Board liaison, Matt Gilli. And we started this past week, and we'll be meeting at four o'clock on Mondays going through December, with the possibility of, I think, an extra meeting, or two extra meetings outside of Monday. So people can follow the schedule on the town website, the documents are put up as the committee is discussing the budgets, and so we're trying to be very open and transparent about the process. I received a phone call early this week, somebody was driving on 123 near the post office, Pete's store, and they believed that the speed limit in that area should be reduced. It's currently forty, and there are a couple of signs on both ends that say busy intersection ahead, and...
Nobody reads those signs.
This person is suggesting that the town should get more involved in requesting a reduction in the speed limit. I think the lowest it would go would be thirty-five, if DOT would consider...
Well, it's forty now.
It's forty.
Well, it goes from fifty to forty, right there.
Right. And you can't drop, you can't drop from fifty to thirty-five, you have to have something in the middle, a certain number of...
Right, you're only allowed to drop so many miles an hour.
It'll be up to DOT.
Pardon?
It's a state road, isn't it?
So, is this board okay with me reaching out to find out if there is a possibility?
Yeah, sure.
And it might just be moving that forty a little bit.
It's a little hard pulling out of the store or the post office to see...
It is.
You know, somebody coming off the fifty mile an hour zone.
Right, right.
And then, and they're still going fifty when they get to the store, so...
Okay, so they wondered if the town would take a more active role in requesting that at least be looked at with the possibility of a speed reduction.
Absolutely, positively.
Okay, very good. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thanks. You got the consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda, approval of the minutes, and authorization of the warrants.
I second it.
All in favor? All right, we got a wharf in front of us, I've been practicing this guy's name.
I didn't, I'm glad you had to say it, not me.
Yep, Mack and Teffer. But Jay and... Oh, and Takianna Lara, hers is easier.
You did better than I would have.
That's very true, Tim Clark with Codes.
Can you say it?
No, I cannot, I'll leave what you said as it is.
Close enough.
Map two, lot sixty-four, how's that?
Yep.
One, one, two Harpswell Neck Road. Really had nobody there at the site visits, did the low tide, everything seemed fine. They're replacing an existing stairway and doing a ramp and a flat.
So, at one point here, it shows the average low tide being a thousand feet out, that's all, the tide does drop out quite a ways there, a lot of flats. So my question is, productive flats in that point? I mean, now you're getting over towards Little Crow Island, and in that area back in there, where...
I don't think they've been digging that for years.
I didn't see any active digging while I was there, and nothing was brought up from anyone else.
Obviously, going to sit on the flats most of the day.
Correct.
Did the Marine Resource Committee get a chance to look at it at all, by chance?
I assume they did, if Paul signed off.
Yeah.
And before your tenure, right? Yeah, sounds good if Paul signed off.
Yeah.
I guess I'm all right with it.
All right, with it? All right, I move to approve the application, as the harbor master indicates, there's no hazard navigation, no injury of rights others in relation to fishing, following, or navigating.
Second.
All in favor? No discussion? All right. All right. Darcy, first time up, 2026, purpose, FPA root rule.
Terry, do you have the map, the Duck Cove mooring's map, that you can pull up? Nope, not mentioned.
Mitchell Field. It's a map!
Yep, very close.
Did you have Amelia load it?
Yep, and she said it should be in Chrome open on your laptop.
Thank you, whoever just said that.
There you go.
Thanks, Katie.
So, Darcy Kuchar, interim harbor master. What that item is, DMR reached out on November fifteenth to let us know that there's a two-week comment period for municipalities or individuals to weigh in if we have any concerns about LPAs. And LPA permits are the smallest aquaculture sites, they get renewed annually, so they're not like the long-term leases. And there didn't used to be any opportunity for public comment, I think they just recently added that component. I was a little bummed that we got our notice just days after both the harbor and waterfront and the fisheries committee had already met, and the comment period closes before we're going to meet again. So I briefly reached out to the chairs, but that's really not enough time for us to review if there's any concerns with conflicts with fisheries for this round. I think we'll just have to be aware of it for next year, knowing that this comment period exists at some point late in the year. But for myself, as harbor master, I did have one LPA that I do plan to submit a formal comment on. This is Duck Cove over in Birch Island, and the little yellow bubble down there at the bottom is an LPA, it's a work float or a wet storage float, operated by Timmy Johnson, who just recently sold both of his big leases to another aquaculture person or company. And LPAs are not transferable, so whoever he sold the leases to are not going to be able to use that site, that just is in Timmy's name. I had emailed him to ask him if he was willing to give it up this year in December when they expire, I didn't hear back from him. And that green bubble that's right next to the yellow bubble is a property owner just purchased that property, that's the mooring that will be not transferred, but the, you know, he's going to apply for that spot, which the former owner had, and he's got a fifty-foot boat, which will not fit there with the LPA still sitting there. So as the harbor master, I have some concern that an LPA that's potentially not being used, I didn't see any activity there all summer, is interfering with one of our residents being able to use the mooring. Just letting you guys know.
So I assume the preparing right owners of the landowner supersede the rights of the LPA?
Well, I mean, it's, it's kind of like...
No, once it's in place.
Yeah, the LPA was granted, so in theory, it's kind of our tough luck if somebody wants to put a bigger boat there, but I feel like the conditions are such that if he's not going to be using it, you know, why are we going to have that ground held and interfere with us using it for the town, so...
So if Tim doesn't use it, then it's gone?
Yeah, that's what I would like, we can ask, the DMR's going to decide what they want to do with it, but I did want to formally submit those comments on our behalf. Just make sure you guys are good with that.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
That time. Right? That's one of these things you just can be aware of, apparently.
Can I just ask, the general public, Darcy? The general public, do they, they're able to comment, so if anyone has a public comment, they can go to our website and follow the link and make a comment?
I believe so, yeah, they have like a format for it, it's very like restrictive, you have, you know, it has to fall in line with the criteria that, you know, they list and everything, which is why I wish we had had more time to really kind of prepare our data if we wanted to really look at them, but we'll be on point next year.
Okay.
All right. Mitchell Field Boat Launch Update.
So we're going to start off with Mark Ironman, who is a consultant for the town on this project, I believe he's joining us. And we also have Kevin from GEI. And Mark's going to update us on the project, and then we've run into a situation where Mark, Kevin, and I have been discussing how to deal with this third-party inspection situation that we find ourselves in, so I'll let Mark take it away, and we'll go from there.
Okay, good evening. Excuse me for my voice, I seem to lose it every night about this time. Kevin is with us tonight. Can you hear me?
What'd you do? What'd you do?
He was working. Did you mute Zoom, Mary Ann?
Zoom tight.
Does that help?
No, it was fine. It was fine.
Can you turn it back up? Okay. Mark, go ahead and speak.
Okay. Let me do three things tonight, and then Kevin is with us from GEI. As I think the... As I think the members of the select board know, but probably the public does not know, and maybe even some town employees don't know. Dan Bannon, who has been the project manager and principal contact with GEI over the last year or so, and was responsible for getting the final design, the permits for the project, and going through the bidding process with the town. Dan is now going to leave GEI. And Kevin, who you'll meet in a few minutes, is stepping in to be the project manager. Kevin can explain his history and background, but has jumped in as of the progress meeting two weeks ago and is up to speed and seems to be very much on top of things. And I think we'll be, we'll be very pleased with his work. Second thing is Christie asked me to give people sort of an update of where things are with the project. And if you have not been to Mitchell Field in the last three or four weeks, Wyman and Simpson is going to town and moving very quickly. They have torn up the former concrete pad uphill from the bandstand. And that material was recycled and used as part of the fill for the extension off the causeway that leads to the, to the boat launch. GEI oversaw their use of that and approved of it. And they are moving forward to try and get that parking area filled, graded, and the new stormwater facilities put in. Down at the waterfront, they are making a lot of progress. They are in the process of building that extension off the causeway. There's a lot of fill that goes in there to get it up to the grade of the existing causeway, load after load after load of rock in there. And as they're building it up, they're also putting the armoring riprap along the north side. And again, if you haven't seen it, the riprap down there probably is typically about two feet square, maybe some of it three feet square. Some of it looks like a small washing machine. That's moving along pretty quickly. And they're working that out. They've taken down the grade on the causeway, removed the existing paving. And that will be brought back up to grade and paved as part of the access to the, to the boat launch. And what you don't see is off-site at their shop in Richmond, they are in the process of building steel forms in which the 26-foot-long concrete plank will be asked to build the, the actual boat launch. And they expect to have that ready. I think they said at the progress meeting on Tuesday, probably within about two weeks, to start the process of casting the planks. They're on schedule to essentially complete most of the, what I would call the bones of the boat launch and the parking area by the end of the year or early January. Their plan then is to shut down for the winter and then come back in the spring and do the final work of some of the painting work, the paving that needs to be done, the striping, all of that. Still looking at a completion by May, end of May of 2026. So that's where we are. I think, and Kevin can correct me if he feels differently. I think everything has gone pretty smoothly up to this point. There were a couple of issues about the riprap, and I think those have been taken care of. GEI has a staff engineer who is regularly onsite checking on things. And GEI staff has been to the quarry in Auburn where the rock is coming from. And that has all been checked to make sure it meets the specifications. And I believe their plan to, GEI plans to go up to Wyman and Simpson's shop in Richmond in the next few days, if they have not already done so, to check the forms for the blanks before they start pouring concrete in there. That raises the question that has come up. The main department of transportation has advised the town through GEI that there needs to be third-party inspection of four general areas of the project. That means hiring an independent firm to check that things meet the, meet the specifications. The four areas are really the compaction of the areas that are being filled to create the, the boat launch and, and the area that's the subgrade for the actual travel surface. The concrete that's being used to create the concrete planks up at the Richmond shop, the small amount of onsite concrete work that will be done, the stub pier and some other work. Again, that concrete needs to be tested and approved as meeting the specifications. And finally, the actual paving, the mix that's being used to do the paving. There's been a pattern of back and forth between me, GEI, and the main department of transportation as to exactly what needed, if anything, to have third-party inspection. And how that would be done, I think, in the last few days, main department of transportation has said that the town will have to have independent testing in those four areas that I laid out. And that the, the firm that does that testing either can be working directly for the town or working under contract to GEI, who would coordinate their testing to make sure that the testing company is where it needs to be. As Christie said, we've been talking about what the best approach is. I think the sense is, at this point, that the town should use GEI to oversee and retain a third-party testing company. A couple of names have been talked about, but I'll let Kevin deal with that. And there will be an added cost to that. And that would require a change order in GEI's contract to cover sort of the pass-through costs for the third-party testing. With that, I'll stop. And Kevin, do you want to introduce yourself and go from there?
Yeah, great, thanks, Mark. So I'm Kevin Bursch, and I'm with GEI Consultants. I've been with GEI a little over 16, oh, 14 years. I took a two-year hiatus and went to marine construction and was a marine contractor for a couple of years during the, the period of COVID. But since been with GEI, I primarily manage construction projects focused on the coastal waterfront aspects of things. And I'm also a regional manager here in the East Region, focusing more on the Boston area, but have projects up and down the seacoast. As Mark was highlighting, so with Dan leaving, I've been taking over the project, getting up to speed. And one of the things that has come to light is this testing requirement by main DOT. I can say, since we actually met earlier today at around 2:00, I have had the opportunity finally to schedule a meeting with main dot, which will be happening after the Thanksgiving holiday. But with that, we are hoping to reduce the number of tests being mandated by main DOT. But it does not still get us away from the intent of the contract, which is to hold the contractor accountable and ensuring that they meet the plans and specs of the contract documents. So as Mark was describing, main dot has said that we have to have a true third-party, and it cannot be funneled through the contractor. So the simplest approach is to have GEI hire this third-party testing company. I've proposed to find multiple quotes to provide the best economical solution for the town and minimize the cost as best as possible. I am also coordinating with main dot to see what else we can do from their side of it to reduce the testing requirements that they're imposing on the town, while at the same point, still ensuring that the project will provide the longevity that's been, you know, discussed with everybody here historically.
So Kevin, you indicate that you've been involved in a lot of these projects along the coast. Hasn't DOT regularly required additional inspections?
They have. But to my understanding, originally, it was a lot of the testing would be going back to the DOT lab. So the cost necessarily wouldn't be there. But now they're, because they're only partially funding the project, they're now allowing us to use a third-party testing company. But that, it comes with the added cost that now they're going to do all the, you know, all the testing. They're going to collect the samples. They're going to perform the infield testing. And then there'll be, for instance, Mark said, with the concrete testing, they'll be breaking those cylinders at the required frequency to ensure that we're getting the proper materials.
I guess my point is that it's at least the second time that GEI has caused a change order because something unexpected showed up. And we're relying on you guys to be the professionals here and kind of pave the way and know what's going on. So, I mean, how did this get by you?
Honestly, sir, I, so I, you know, as you heard, I'm new to the project here, right? In the contract specifications, some of the specs outline that the contractors to perform some of it. Others outlined that the town would be providing some of it. You know, I don't know what prior discussions were. But at this point, we are being advised by main dot that it has to all be true third-party.
Okay. So, so my question now is, is the budget? I mean, this is an extra cost that we had not anticipated.
So the, the project is currently under budget, within our budget.
So we have room.
We do have some room.
Right.
But this was something that, like, this is what we're paying an engineer for. This is why I voted against the last change order. Because, I mean, this is you guys' job. Like, there wasn't a new law passed within the last six months that required this third-party testing. It sounds like this has been on the books for, since at least the beginning of the project, you know? That, that main dot is. Right, which is quite a few years ago. You know, this is something in my mind that you guys should have caught. I thought that's what we were paying you guys for.
Yep, I mean, I could tell you from GEI's standpoint, we don't do third-party testing in-house. That, that is not something GEI does. You know, I'd have to look at the exact contract language, but usually that's something that's excluded from our services, you know, and I, you know.
But why are we finding this out now when the project is over half-done by the sounds of it? You know, and all of a sudden, this is being brought to us now? You know, I, I feel this would have gone over much better is if, in the very beginning, we were told, you know, when you get to point X, you're going to need a third-party, you know, to, to check this. You know, this should have been something that should have been caught when the contract was first written out and signed, in, in my mind.
Yeah, I mean, from, from what I can tell you is, in the contract documents, it does say that the town would be securing it. So I would have expected that those conversations were had at that time. You know, but at this point in time, what I'm reading in the contract is, is one thing. And main dot's now telling us we have to do something else, right? So as I had said to Christie earlier today and Mark, you know, we're going to do the best we can to minimize these costs. You know, I'm thinking it's in the order magnitude of possibly $20,000. But it would only be for the services rendered. And GEI is not marking up any of these additional costs. You know, this is not something that we are looking to make a buck on, right? This is something that is being presented to, you know, make sure that you maintain compliance with main DOT. You know, that said, we will shop around to try and, you know, essentially put out an RFP to known entities. You know, for instance, one name that was proposed by the contractor was SW Coal. You know, my intent is to reach out to them as well as others to get pricing for you. And then whichever provides the most economical solution to the town is what we intend to contract with.
Okay, thank you. I mean, the least expensive way to get this done, I think we would appreciate it. Change orders are, you know, that's not the way to get things done.
No, and, and what I understand you're saying is, the only cost we're paying is for the contractor. GEI is, is not going to change their contract. GEI is not going to make any money out of this.
That's correct.
Just the, the third-part, third-party contractor. There, there used to be one, a private business rated crooked that did concrete testing. I don't feel this there.
Elaborate there.
Would GEI be willing to absorb some of this cost?
It, it's, it's not something I can absorb at, at this point. But, I mean, it's definitely something I'd be happy to talk to Christie and others about. But it's, you know, I'd have to look back at our exact contract, but I would assume it, it was excluded originally.
I, I think the point my two colleagues are getting at, this isn't the first surprise. It, this goes back before you were even GEI, back when it was Marty Baker. So it's been one right after the other. So you, you can understand the frustration here.
I, I totally do, sir, right? And, you know, it's the, the last thing I want to come to you with as a new face on the project. You know, seeking additional cost, right? Which is why I said to Christie and Mark that I'm not looking to make an extra dollar on this by any means. You know, we're, we're looking to just pass the cost on directly, you know, and, and provide you with the best product possible.
How much are we under budget, Christie? Any idea roughly, even if you don't?
You know, off the top of my head, I don't remember. But we're hoping to have enough money to pave the parking area.
Right, and this, this is going to take some of that money.
It is.
I think we still might have had a little wiggle room. Pardon?
Go ahead.
My understanding is you, you had, I believe, about $100,000 plus on their budget.
Yeah, which I think we kind of wanted to use to pave the parking area. So it might cut into that potentially.
But we, we still have no choice.
It's got to get done.
Right, but I mean, I, I wouldn't, I voted against the last change order. I'm not going to flip myself now.
No, 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 you stick with it.
I will.
You can make your point. But it's got to get done.
Yeah, all right.
You can be the hero.
I'll try.
Does that require a motion?
Yes.
Okay, well, I move that we pay the extra, I mean, that we go.
How about not to exceed 20?
Not to exceed $20,000. The GEI seeks a third-party and does this in the most expeditious and inexpensive way possible, not to exceed 20,000.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
I'm going to be consistent, if nothing else.
All right, all in favor? Opposed? Good job.
Oh, and by the way.
All right. Is there anything else from Kevin?
No, I think Kevin and Mark, we're all set. We're going to turn to Don Miskel, who's going to give an update on the demolition of the building and how that's going to interface. the demolition of the building and how that's going to interface with the other project. And he's got a plan for what will happen to vehicular traffic he wants to talk about.
Before, before we get off.
Mark's got his hand up.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mark.
Uh, I hope you will remind the members of the board, the staff and the public, uh, that Thanksgiving is coming and that means that, uh, BLM Radio will be playing, uh, Alice's Restaurant, um, uh, at noon, two minutes afternoon on Thanksgiving Day.
That is correct.
And I have my Alice's Restaurant shirt on that you gave.
Boy, he's off on a tangent.
Where, where in the world did you get that?
Guess we know he's excited.
Before we get off the boat launch, um, yeah, Community Television has a camera down there, uh, I don't know if you were going to mention that, uh, but we had two cam, we put one down there and it ran for nine hours and then quit. So we put the second one down there and we're hoping, we've got our fingers crossed that we'll get some footage.
You leave us?
Yeah.
When did you show his T-shirt?
Yeah, the truth comes out. Thank you, Mark.
Go to Mark.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you both.
I will also say, uh, something that, that we like to do on our projects, at least I like to make sure that we do it, is, uh, we are taking drone photos as progress updates and we'll be sharing them with the town so you could use them as you see fit.
Okay.
Great, great. Thank you.
So if our camera doesn't work, then we've got something at least.
You got a backup at least, yeah.
And I'm also, I'm up there, uh, roughly every two weeks at the moment, so if any of you have any questions or want to talk to me directly, feel free to reach out.
All right, well, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. It was a pleasure meeting everybody.
No more surprises.
Well, yours, Don. Don Miskel, Mitchell Field Stewart, um, we, following the progress meeting with the boat launch people, uh, we had a, our first pre-construction meeting with Lakeside Concrete Cutting, who will be doing the demolition of the admin building. We went over some things, they got a chance to meet the onsite folks from both GEI. Uh, Kevin was there, Dan was there, Jacob, who's their onsite engineer, was there. And Dave Tinker from Wyman and Simpson, who's the onsite manager for, uh, the boat launch. Were all there and we had a chance to get together. We had the building open, um, everything's out. Uh, and the building's, uh, ready for them. They are still planning on starting one December and, uh, hopefully finish by thirty-one December, that's what their contract says. Uh, they didn't see anything that was going to slow them up. The building's generally open. They did a walkthrough. Um, I'll provide them with the keys this week, uh, to the garage and the door. And we'll go from there. The Jersey barriers currently go right up to the building. Wyman and Simpson has already said they'll move them back. Um, however, uh, Lakeside wants that done. So the reason I'm generally, uh, here for tonight to talk about is we'll have two projects going at the same time, which are both going to involve dump trucks. I mean, uh, Auburn Aggregates is, uh, cutting a rut between here and Auburn with the amount of rock that they're bringing in. And, uh, the demolition folks are going to have the same thing. They're bringing equipment in too. So that's basically going to shut down the waterfront. The parking area behind the admin building will become their lay-down area while they're taking the building apart. So what I've proposed is that we will close Mitchell Field to public vehicle access at the gate for the period of one to thirty-one December. If they finish early, we would reopen early. If they have to go longer, we'll have to stay longer. That, um, does not preclude the, the public from walking at the field, but we've placed some restrictions in our proposal. We do not want them walking on Mitchell Field Drive, which is the main road. There's going to be dump trucks coming back and forth from both projects for that period of time. And I just feel like they don't need to be ducking dogs and bicycles and everything else. We are recommending that, um, the public will be restricted to the north, north perimeter road or the south perimeter road of their choosing. They'll be able to walk down to a certain point and then they're going to have to turn around and walk back. Christie has already interfaced with PAM, uh, and they will be able to use PAMs for parking in addition to the parking areas that we have up at the field. We'll essentially preclude, um, we've ordered some additional signage to put out. We'll move the sawhorses around. There will be plenty of signs indicating to the public where they can and can't go. Um, we just ask people to honor that. I'm not there to be mom and dad. Um, it's for your own safety. The law grows tough and it says I'm betting on the truck. So we just want to keep everybody safe. I can't think of anything else.
No, I think there was one point I wanted to ask the select board if you would authorize me to sign any, um, documents for the disposal of the hazardous waste. Those materials need to go to certain disposal sites and somebody for the town has to sign off.
Yeah, no, that's okay. You know, some things for the citizens out there who might be watching, um, we've got the camera up. We're hoping that that'll continue to work, um, so that you can keep, i- i- it's a little bit unfortunate because where they're doing all the work is on the north side and you can't go anywhere and view what's happening. Um, the camera on the tree was the ideal spot, so we'll just have to keep our fingers crossed that the camera keeps working. Uh, I want to notify the public that the porta-potties, effective one December, the porta-potty at the Suntry Building will leave because we can't keep them there around. Uh, the porta-potty down at the admin building will move over onto Lakeside Concrete Cuttings. That will be their porta-potty and then, uh, Wyman and Simpson already has one. Um, check the town website, Mitchell Field webpage. Um, we'll post this parking drawing with an explanation. I'll have a little bit more on a drawing to post. I'm going to do a TV spot. We've got an article going in the anchor for, uh, December, which will notify the public. And, um, I think that's everything. Some side notes, T-Mobile's antennas are up. I'm not sure when they're going to start, but they're cooking right along on the cell tower. Um, and the only other thing is, um, I will be reaching out with Christie's blessing to Maine DEP because we've burnt the invasive pile and they scraped all that together. We want to just bury it onsite at the field, but I've got to get permission from Maine DEP to dig the hole. They'll want to know what we're burying, which is essentially the invasive plants that we keep stacking up. Um, it's not, not like we were burning other stuff. We, we've burnt some old picnic tables and, uh, the da- the old dance floor from Harpsell days. But beyond that, um, I think things are going along well. You know, I just implore the public to stay back. I know it's, you know, looks inviting and they don't see a lot of truck traffic, but when those trucks are coming down off of the Lower Meadow and the, um, on the old, uh, gravel road, their chances of stopping on a dime and giving you an unsense change are pretty slim. So we just want to keep everybody safe.
All right, thanks, Don.
Thank you, Don.
I think we're just looking for the board to basically approve the proposal that Don has put forth tonight.
Do you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I, I move we approve this drawing and this, 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 uh, traffic circulation plan.
Uh, I second it.
No more discussion. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Don has really done an incredible job. Keeping an eye on things at Mitchell Field and keeping the staff informed about any issues that need to be followed up on, so.
We're working on cloning it.
Yeah, probably should have moved this up further up the thing, but municipal firefighters callback policy? Like, or Mike sit there all night?
Well, Mike's enjoyed the meeting so far.
Good evening. So this is a policy that ninety-nine point nine percent of fire departments have. It's the call back off-duty personnel if you have a fire or a large incident or something. Uh, I think the reason we're bringing it to you is just because it involves some pay changes. Um, so any off-duty firefighter, if there was a, uh, all hands are great of fire, they can be called back. That would be a minimum of two hours at an overtime rate or the actual, uh, duration of the incident. Uh, the other thing is just cleaning up. We've called people in for storm coverage before and we've never had a policy on it. So that's just added into the end of the policy. Uh, the only, this money's already in the budget. The only impact I see is maybe five hundred bucks a year. You know, how many fires does Harpsell have? You know, maybe two or so. So minimal impact, the money's already there and I just need approval to enact policy.
Is it common in, uh, other places that the municipal firefighters are not mandated to respond to callback? I mean, that's, yeah, because they're, that's their job, so it's like, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm, I'm good with it. I'm good with this. I move that we, you know, approve.
I second it.
All in favor?
Uh, just because you did it, Mike, where's the point one percent that doesn't use it? You said ninety-nine point nine, now I got to put you on the spot.
I can't say a hundred percent because.
Uh, fair enough. You set yourself up for it. I had to, I had to, I had to take a bite at it.
Mike, did you have an effective date you wanted to use for that policy?
Until I get the red light policy done, we can just do it.
Oh.
We can just do it effective without the red light part of it.
Okay.
We put that into effect December first.
Okay.
So, okay with you guys?
Yeah, good to be.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, Emergency Vehicles Committee.
So I think this one slipped through the cracks when you were doing, um, committee review. And so we just kind of looked back at the, the former members. There were four. Um, apparently, Cundy's Harbor has been working on some specifications. Usually each department kind of works on the vehicle they're planning to replace. And then they report to the town's vehicle committee and the town's vehicle committee makes a recommendation to the select board. So we realized we didn't have the town committee appointed and we're asking the board to just reappoint the four people who previously served. I, I think the chair was also the select board rep and a voting member. Did you, were you a voting member of that committee, do you recall?
No.
No, okay, just a liaison then.
So is, you polled these other guys, the chiefs and so far the?
Um, you know.
Jonathan Burbank and these guys, uh, you're just assuming.
I'm assuming, I'm quite sure the chiefs are fine with it.
Yeah.
But I didn't specifically talk to Jonathan Burbank or Nelson Barter.
I talked to, uh, Chief Mercer and Wallace. And, um, I haven't talked to Jonathan. Jonathan's one's doing the work right now anyway.
So why not, right? Yeah.
Yep.
I have no issue with it.
No.
Nelson's usually game for whatever.
He is.
Yeah, I, I move that, you know.
No, I would just say it's a reappointment of the.
I move that we reappoint these guys.
I second it. We, we actually haven't got together since COVID.
Yeah, wow.
This committee, so I've done it before. All in favor? Selection of contract is for winter sand and septic system installation.
So there was only one bid received for the winter sand, um, and it's twenty-three dollars and fifty cents per yard from Country Fair Incorporated.
Are the other ones we used last year?
No, we had used Cobb Excavating last year.
It's Ben Cobb.
And it was, it's been Cobb for a while, um, and it intended to bid, but timing got away from him. Um, and, uh, last year's pricing, the twenty-four, twenty-five winter season was fifteen eighty-eight yard.
Oh, wow, oh, that's a big jump.
So this is an incentive to use less.
I can tell you the cost of material has gone up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know, what are we going to do? I move that we.
We have one choice.
Country Fair, yeah.
I second it, sorry.
Yeah. It's got gold flakes in it.
Don't tell me that, I'll be down there panning it.
All in favor? All right.
So the next, um, selection of contractors is, um, a little more variety added to it. We've received four, uh, bids for this one. This is to replace the failing septic system of a resident that was income qualified for a grant from the state of Maine. And four bids were received, CCC Construction for seventeen thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. Bursey Enterprises, seventeen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Wow.
That was close.
Triple K Excavation, thirty-three thousand three hundred.
Wow.
Ray Labby and Sons, thirty-five thousand two hundred. Um, I have not heard that. I emailed the state immediately. Um, we're on a very tight timeline. The state does not prefer, um, winter installations, so trying to get this project completed before ground freezing. Contractor is willing to, the contractor we're recommending is CCC Construction. They are the low bidder. Um, and he's willing to rearrange his schedule and, and jump on this as soon as approved by the select board and the state.
All right, I move CCC Construction.
I second it.
All in favor?
And that is the company that just put the town's new septic system in.
Yeah.
Good, so they're experienced.
Yeah.
They're pretty quick, you have to say.
I think we were very satisfied, absolutely.
See, because what, what I got is the, is the, um, attached as a request for bid package for the town office project, which was already done, actually.
Well, as I, as I emailed you the correct memo, I indicated that I posted the incorrect one and provided the incorrect one.
I see.
So thank you for pointing that out again.
Matt and I weren't going to say anything.
When I look at it, it's like, what the heck is this?
But I did, for the members of the public, that is correct. I, they were named the same file and I uploaded the incorrect one. But the select board was provided the correct one, um, as early as, uh, Wednesday, I believe.
Yesterday, yeah.
All righty. Public comment? Pretty slim at public right now. Other business? Nothing? Carrie, Christie?
No, I mean, the town office will be closed Thursday and Friday next week.
And the recycling center.
And the recycling center too, thank you. Yep.
Nice. All right, in that case, uh, we're adjourned.